Have everybody's attention, please. Appreciate the latitude. Welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. We will have our our invocation by Michael Bridges, Minister of Connections, First Baptist Church of Jonesboro, be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand with me. Minister Bridges here. All right, we will have a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Aye.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our June 18th, 2024 Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments during this time?
Are there any additions, deletions for the, for the agenda? All right, hearing none. I accept a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Hambrick. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Yes, unanimous.
Our next item is the presentation. This is our budget, budget presentation in public hearing to adopt the FY25 proposed budget. This will be presented by our deputy CFO, Angela Jackson.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Commissioner. This will be the FY2025 proposed budget. The budget process. The budget requests were sent to departments on January 4th, 2024. A budget class was held on January 10th. The budget request deadline was February 2nd. Meetings with departments to include the chairman, the DCO, the DCOO, were held April 4th through the 24th, and the budget hearing is tonight on June 18th, and the budget adoption is scheduled for June 25th, 2024 at 12:00 PM. Analyzing the budget request. Salaries and benefits represented 184.8 million. Additional personnel, 25.8 million. Regular operating expenses, 133.7 million. Minor computer equipment, 2 million. Other minor equipment, 1.2 million. Capital, 36.2 million, for a total departmental request of 383.7 million, which was 91 million over the FY24 adopted budget. The projected general fund revenue, 284 million. A variance between the request and the projected revenue was 99 million. Balancing the budget, there were several budget cuts that, of course, needed to take place. Additional personnel went from 25.8 million to 8 million. Regular operating went from 133.7 million to 119.3 million. Minor computer equipment were cut from 1.9 million to .9. Other minor equipment were reduced from 1.2 million to 200,000. Capital was reduced from 36.2 million to 3.8 million. Total reductions, 66.8 million. There was still a gap after the cuts of 32 million. There's a proposed tax increase within this budget of two and a half mils. How did we get here? Contractual costs increased from the FY24 budget of 6.6 million. The county liability insurance increased 1.3 million. Medical claims expense increased 1.3 million. R and M buildings increased 3 million. Electric and water both increased. Whoops. Personnel costs increased, and there was also a decrease in revenue. For the perfect storm, expenses increased and revenues decreased. Public utility tax last year was 15.1 million collected. This year was 9 million, and we're expecting another decrease down to 7 million next year. So it reminds us kind of our households. Expenses are increasing, but our revenues are decreasing. Our general fund revenue estimate, property taxes represent 67% of the budget. Other taxes, which includes the local option sales tax, represents 24%, and charges for services represent 8% of the budget. General fund expenses. Personnel costs to include salaries and benefits represent 66%. Regular operating expenses, 36%. Capital represents 1%, and other uses, 5%. The general fund budget is 317 million. It's a 3% decrease compared to the FY24 amended budget. There are zero new positions in this budget compared to 21 last year. There are zero reclassifications in this budget compared to 60 last year. This budget contains a 4% COLA for employees, whereas last year budget contained a COLA and a merit. We also had certain mandates come down from the state legislature to include a new ethics board, and the budget for that board is included in this budget.
How much is that?
It was about 500,000 for this year, because it won't begin, the employees won't begin until January.
Okay, now that's for the new ethics board.
Correct.
Okay, not the one that's in place now. That will take the place of that one.
I know there's a new one. I'm not sure if it completely replaces it, or not, but we have to budget.
Yeah, we would have to dissolve it.
Okay, well, since the legislature did it, why are they responsible for financing it?
Unfunded mandate, yeah.
Exactly. Capital is primarily funded through SPOLOST, which are life-to-date funds, and we don't show the budget for them every year, but the projects that will be completed during FY25, the County Records Center, the Northwest Library Site Enhancement, a landscape design for that, the Small Business Incubator, the Gateway Signs, which you see on this PowerPoint, the IT Bunker, phases 2, 3, and 4 of the Rivers Edge Walking Trail, Fire Station 1, upgrades to the concession stands at Morrow Lake City Park, Rum Creek Park, and Rex Park, the Shellnut Senior Center renovations, a water rescue training facility, and the fleet maintenance facility expansion. We also anticipate completing the winter weather supply storage facility, the tennis court resurfacing, and to begin work on the amphitheater located at the International Park. It will be called the Lakeview Event Center. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions from the board?
Any questions from Ms. Jackson?
Yes, I'll start.
Um. Trying to find my note here. Are lawsuits that are taken from the general fund captured anyway within our budget or decline in the budget?
Litigation claims and settlements, that if it's a case that's resolved by the Civil Service Board, it comes out of salaries for that department. So let's say an employee that was terminated is being paid back pay for a certain period of time, then that would come out of that person, that department's regular salary and wages account. But litigation claims and settlement is another item that last year, I think, was budgeted at maybe 2.5, 3 million.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Chair. Yeah, I just want to pick it back off of you. So if there's no money in that department's budget, then where does the money come from?
Fund balance.
Fund balance. So I know we just gave one department roughly about 17 million dollars. How is that, did that assist in creating this shortfall that we're experiencing for next fiscal year 2025?
Um, it's a part of, it was a hit on the fund balance. So of course, it lowered fund balance, which limits the amount that we then have to budget for expenditures and to have as our safety net, basically.
Any other questions?
Well.
Commissioner Hambrick.
I'm thinking, and I thought Commissioner Davis was going to ask another question regarding the lawsuits and all that we get from usually law enforcement and all with accidents and that kind of thing. And I know that comes, is that self-insured? Does that hit our budget?
The fund balance or general fund?
You want to answer that?
Good evening. So the county is self-insure as it relates to automobile accidents. We have statutory liability, 500,000 for a single incident and up to 700,000 for an incident involving multiple claimants. As far as, so yes, that is a fund balance hit because the county does not have insurance to pay, pay for that. But so each one of those, yes, is a fund. But now how much is set aside for those? That is more of a finance question, but yes, the money itself does come from the general fund.
Okay, so how much do we set aside each year, each fiscal year?
It depends on the year. Before, we have received advice from legal prior to Mr. Reed being on site, and that advice was not to budget that litigation because it puts a message out there to the attorneys that that's what they can come after. So then it's automatically a hit on fund balance whenever the litigate, the claims are taken by the county.
So in here, do we have the amount that we spent this year?
Currently, I think we've spent about 3 million this year so far.
Yeah, for me, it's, it's a matter of looking at direct savings and indirect savings. We're out purchasing vehicles that are sitting, and we're doing a whole lot like that. I guess my question becomes, and, and we probably cannot answer this, but how do we begin to somewhat audit some of the spending, or can we even legally, of some of these other departments? Because one thing, we don't want to, we do not want to overburden our citizens, but we also, we have to keep them safe as well.
Hey, good evening. As far as an audit would go, I know the chairman has asked me that question. If you're, if you're talking about what I think you're talking about, then it would probably need to be similar to what we did with the travel audit and have an external company come in that is completely separate, third party, and.
I'm talking to Sheriff.
Yeah, and that's what I was thinking you were talking about. So that would be a decision that would be up to the board. My recommendation would be for it to be an external group, similar to what we did before, especially with it being a constitutional officer.
I understand. And my last question, and I believe Chairman, you can speak to this a little bit as well. With that landfill enterprise fund and some of the issues going on with that, have we looked at positioning ourselves financially with that as well? For the landfill? That's a private, a separate revenue fund. And of course, it's fall short every year. So we always have to make up the difference out of the fund balance, general fund rather. So yeah, that's just something that's just, is not, the landfill is not a real profitable money generator. So we've tried a number of things, but we're still going to plug at it, but it has always ended up in a deficit, as long as I've been here, anyway. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the board will now consider the consent agenda.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry?
My apologies. We have to have the public hearing for the budget.
Okay, all right. All right, at this time, it's a public hearing in reference to the presentation, the budget presentation that was just presented. It is a proposal. At this time, we're going to have public hearings, so if anyone would like to come forward and speak in favor, well, the speak in reference to the proposed budget, please come forward.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. I, in hearing the budget here, I must say Clayton County and the citizens, we have a very big problem here. When you are seeing prices rise in the grocery store and everywhere else, and you're cutting the cost, the cost of living in different departments, this is going to lead to layoffs of which each and every one of you appreciates the employees that you have here. When you have growth everywhere and a decline in your, in your business, or any business, you better search long and hard for a solution. Thank you.
And I can guarantee you that this budget does not anticipate, or it is definitely not my desire or will to do any layoffs, and that's why we cut back from the merit increase and did the COLA instead, just the COLA. I would rather have both for the employees, but if I had to have one or the other across the board, 4% increase, at least will give the employees something to combat the inflation problem. But there's not going to be no layoffs.
Well, I must say, we all need to tighten up.
Amen.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else like to speak? Yes, sir. Come forward, and then ma'am, you next.
Good evening. David Hamrick, District 3. Madam Commissioner, I can ask or answer your question about the ethics. Having been to the last two ethics meetings, there have been complaints filed January, February, and March of this year against a couple commissioners. Unfortunately, the person who puts these on the calendar happened to be out on leave, so therefore, no action was taken. That person has finally come back off leave. These ethics complaints are now numbered 208, 209, 210, and 211. So it's taken five months to take action because of the way the current dysfunctional board is set up. The second thing is, being it is a meeting, they do not record anything, which, as this meeting is being recorded, they should record any and all actions in that ethics board. They don't know. The second thing is, they can't even tell you, and this is the chairwoman, couldn't even tell you what a quorum was. She had to go look it up in a book. So, fourth, these people are appointed. That can lead to them owing or beholding to somebody. The new ethics board is completely autonomous from any entity in Clayton County. The members will be selected from the grand jury through the Supreme Court. They will not answer to anyone except through the courts. This is why this was needed, and I personally helped push it. I know there's some people that are running for election right now who don't want it. One reason being, any ethics complaint would have to come before this board to authorize it to go forward, and that should not be happening. That's like having the tail wagging the dog, especially if the complaint is against one of the members. Why should they be able to vote whether that investigation goes forward or not? I hope this answers your question. David Hamrick, Clayton County, District Number 3.
Well, Mr. Hamrick, I'm for the ethics board.
Fantastic.
My problem is that the state is saying to do this, but they are not funding it. We're having to do it.
Yes, ma'am.
Clayton County money has to do that.
That is correct.
Yeah, well, that's the only, I mean, that's the concern I have. And it's, I believe, is it 500,000, $500,000?
Well, once we hire the administrator, which is to be a lawyer and the officer, the one good thing about this new ethics committee, they do have the authority to fine and/or solicit criminal charges against those who commit these violations. And we're hoping that that alone will be a word to the wise, to mind your Ps and Qs. And even though we have a commissioner who just paid a fine, it was paid with campaign funds, which in and of itself is an ethics violation. So.
Well, we get a list of whatever, how the money is spent. I'm talking with the attorney now. Do you know, is that included in this new bill that was passed?
If we're paying it, I would assume we know how it's done.
You're asking whether the board will get a.
All we have to do is pay it.
So the, right now, the legislation contemplates that up to a certain amount, a certain threshold, I think it's right, 200,000, that the, it is treated as something that they, that the, is a priority. But anything above 200,000, it goes through the regular budgetary process. So you'll see, similar to, like now, if it comes up, if the board is looking to spend or budget more than 200,000, it will come to this board for part of the just budgetary process.
Okay, but how is that spent? I mean, who, who's getting this money?
Part of it is for salaries.
Salaries for?
For the ethics officer, and there's one other staff member that is part of the ethics office right now.
So where would this office be set up?
Those things, well, we have until the beginning of, well, until January to, to put all of that in place. So we're looking at space and and working on the process of getting the people appointed and stuff.
Do you know if that will be increased each year, or does it remain at that 500,000?
It's going to be dependent on what the ethics officer and that staff determine what is the appropriate budgetary impact. Just like any other, any other department, they'll submit a budgetary request, and then you all would treat, if it's more than 200,000, you all would treat that just like any other departmental requests.
Any other questions?
Madam Commissioner, I believe what they did is they know the 200, they put in the 500 just so they would not have to come back here. The goal is to be under the 5. And I do have a copy, if you would like it later, I can, I'll be more than happy to give it to you of the new, if you have.
I can get, thank you, I can get it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Robinson. I'm a resident of Clayton County in the city of Rivendell. I have a proposal. I've had the opportunity to look through the budget, and I thank you for that. Specifically, my concern, Commissioner Hamrick, District 2. My proposal is that we need some additional health care in that district. We need to look at where and how we can provide services, health care services, in that northern Clayton County area. I say that because I don't see anything available in that area to provide to the residents some form of medical care. In, and I'm talking specifically around the time when we had the epidemic, the pandemic. There was nowhere that the residents in that area would even be able to take a test. So I think it's crucial that you look and review and begin to work in partnership and bring forth some form of medical services in that northern area. Also, taking consideration, Rivendell has just transferred their fire service to Clayton County. So that funding, that 2.5 million that was transferred plus, and I had the opportunity to speak with Chief Swett, that northern area has the highest percentage of needing that fire service along with the ambulance. So that's the reason why I am proposing to you that you take into consideration creating some health services in the northern area of Clayton County.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else like to speak? Chairman, can I, can I respond? Yes, sir. Ma'am, just to let you know, Southern Regional in two weeks, well, actually, next week, will become a teaching hospital. They have 15 internal medicine residents starting on the 24th of next week for orientation. That is going to assist that corridor as well as the rest of Clayton County in helping to bring us more medical services in this community as well. As far as insurances go, we actually had two providers at My Last Gift Fit, which is in District 4, to begin to discuss and begin to distribute information for folks to get insured that aren't.
Okay, thank you. And we established our fire and EMA established health care. We have ambulances that go to different neighborhoods and all. So there's, I mean, there's some things available now.
But there's nowhere in that.
That was just instituted in the last year or two.
Okay, so in the last two years. But I'm looking specifically in that corridor because now you have that new apartment development right there on 314 that's being developed, and then you have some additional housing that's being developed. And along with that, in the budget, it shows that you still have some American Rescue Funds in there. So again, I took my time and read through there because I, this is, this is a area in Clayton County that needs to be addressed, and it's urgent. It's urgent.
Well, I would recommend you get with Chief Swett again and go over the medical units that we have that service the whole county, including the northern part of the county.
Yeah, but then we don't want to use the emergency service when someone can go in and take care.
It's not the emergency service, it's a separate health care that we've established. Can somebody, Chief, can you come up?
Well, I think she, she's looking for a brick of mortar, a building in that urgent care type of building.
Something similar to that.
Is what she's talking about.
Yeah, that's specific I'm talking about. Even if it wasn't, but something where someone can go and get some form of medical care and not have to call EMS or 911.
And to Commissioner Davis's point that the partnership and collaborations that we have with the hospital and what Commissioner Hamrick has been doing in that district to find somebody who is willing to come in and invest in that urgent care.
I agree.
And I think the hospital is looking to do some of that throughout the county. So it's work in progress. Your, your words are definitely dead on because there is, there needs to be some more urgent care type facilities on the, on the northeast end, but on the far south end as well.
As well.
So, thank you.
And I compliment you because you have the new mental health division facility that's coming up right behind Georgia. Right, southern, southern Georgia?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in reference to the budget? All right, at this time, the public hearing is closed. Madam Clerk, next.
Mr. Chair, the board will now consider the consent agenda.
All right, is there a motion to accept, to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any other items? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Yes, unanimous.
Mr. Chair, our next item is item number 17, which is the board appointment.
First board appointment is for public facilities authority pursuant to the board's request adopted through Resolution 2024-21. The General Assembly passed House Bill 1242, creating the Clayton County Public Facilities Authority. This authority may issue bonds for public projects such as improvements. The bill went into effect on May 1st. For the initial appointments, two members shall be appointed for a term of three years. Two members shall be appointed for a term of two years, and one member shall be appointed for a term of one year. For, and the first one is the chair's recommendation. How did we, Mr. Reed, determine the three, two, and one?
That's a decision that you all can make when you're making your appointment. You can say, I would like to appoint this person to, for the three-year term, for the one-year term, two-year term.
For the two of us want.
The three.
First come, first served. So I can just about tell you, I'm about to make a recommendation for three years, so, but it has to pass, though. All right, so with that being said and keeping that in mind, again, my appointment is first up, and I'd like to appoint Mr. Charles Burke to the three-year term. Is there a second?
A second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous. Next board appointment is also to. Next board appointment is also the Public Facilities Authority Board, under the same guidelines that I read earlier. This selection is a District Four.
Now, Commissioner Hambrick, you want that three or you want that two?
I'm, I'm holding anyway for this week, so I'm happy.
Then I'll take the three.
Okay.
I'd like to appoint Patricia Seaball Hand to the three-year term.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Are there any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Is unanimous.
Yours, three? How many is with yours?
Three. So again, all the threes are gone now. We down to the twos and ones. All right. Next board appointment, again, is for the Public Facilities Authority. This is a District Three. I'm going to ask to hold that until, just hold it till next. I can always pass it on from there. Okay. I don't want to see the paper. Help me when I get on it. All right, the last one is District Two.
Oh, okay. I would like to hold this one, but I would like to, to hold it for the two-year. Anyway, I'll hold it for the two.
Hold it till next meeting, please.
Mr. Chair, our next items are zoning items, starting with item number 21. Citizens may speak for and against an item. Thus considered to be a zoning decision, any side will have 10 minutes to present its case. If there is more than one speaker per side, please divide their time or to complete their full presentation within the 10-minute time allotment. When the time runs out, the speaker will be expected to cease speaking and leave the podium area. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor shall speak first. Applicants in cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of a zoning decision item shall have no right for rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name, address, and name of any organization you represent. Please remember abusive or derogatory language will not be permitted. Our first item is item number 21.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Tyler McSwain, representing part of the zoning division for the Community Development Department. On the first petition before you this evening is a conditional use request. That's BLC 23020284. This request is for a convenience store and fueling station, and is part of a misuse commercial industrial development. The request is to the applicant is Het Walker and Jordan PC. And the request, again, is for a conditional use permit for the property located at 9298 Terra Boulevard in Jonesboro, Georgia. The property is also located within the Terra Boulevard overlay. In regards to the site itself, staff did review over the request and made a recommendation of approval. The planning and zoning, the Zone Advisory Board recommended approval with two conditions, which was our approval, and those conditions that the site plan will comply with the overlay, and the site plan should include 16 instead of eight vehicle charging stations. We have an amended copy of the conditions relations to this request with the further discussion with the applicant, and I'll read those conditions with a brief summary as well for the board. Just as a reference, we do have some visuals to show everybody in relation to where the site is. This will be in close proximity to the new planned county administrative building. And there's a site plan in terms of a scaling of what we're looking at there. And as you can see, the reason why this petition is coming before you all is that the use, does, the property does allow commercial developments. This is the fact that the conditional use is required for any fuel sales and convenience store services. Originally, the site plan included truck parking, which was removed, and some other uses that were removed originally from the site plan. So the site plan before you all shows compliance with the overlay and the current zoning district standards. And I'll read the conditions as part of the approval of this request. We do have elevations that were submitted by the applicant showing the numerous commercial buildings and uses on site. As a summary, this does include space for potential grocery, office space, commercial retail, and again, the convenience store, excuse me, the convenience and gasoline sales and services. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and read the conditions. You all have to forgive me. I don't have my glasses with me today, so I had to read from the PowerPoint. Okay, condition number one. The site must comply with the Terra Boulevard overlay district requirements to place a fueling canopy in the rear of the building unless relief is granted by variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals. The applicant does have a variance request to allow these changes and will go before the Zone, the Board of Zoning Appeals, depending on the action of this evening. Condition number two, a minimum of 15 electric vehicle charging spaces shall be distributed throughout the site. Condition number three, the construction shall follow the general intent of the proposed site plan. Minor modifications may be made by further review of the Director of Community Development, which will be limited to building orientation, vertical stacking, square footage, and architectural design changes. Condition number four, public art installation to be provided and reviewed by the Director of Community Development in relation to the performance and design for all art installations on site. Moving over to the next page. Condition number five. Owner, the owner shall reserve and dedicate to the county the right-of-way easement as well as construction and maintenance easements along Highway 1941 to ensure that the county has the proper rights necessary to spend existing sidewalk on the site, such a property to eight feet wide along Highway 1941, should it decide to do so in the future. Condition number six, the following uses shall require a conditional use permit. A, beauty supply stores. B, cigar lounge. C, day spas. Condition number seven, the following uses shall be prohibited, which includes car washes, detail shops, automotive-oriented businesses, service stations. B, small box discount stores. C, pawn shops, pawn brokers, and similar uses. D, vehicle rental. E, vehicle repair and tire shops. F, massage parlors. G, tattoo parlors. H, automobile vehicle sales and car brokers. I, check cashing and payday loans. J, vape shops. K, CBD oil sales. L, laundromat or coin-operated laundry. And lastly, M, motels and hotels. Those are the conditions that we are proposing before the board. It's also being discussed with the applicant. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have, and also the applicant is here with some additional information that's needed as well.
I don't have a question, but when you read this, you said the approval of two conditions.
The, I can answer that. So the Zone Advisory Group, they recommended the approval with those conditions. Since then, we've had some conversations and added more conditions to that recommendation that we presented to you this evening.
I was saying, we may need to change this. Okay, but before we approve or disapprove, what I would need to say.
Well, he did say, he did say on the record there were seven conditions. Mr. Heck?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we appreciate y'all. Appreciate your longstanding service. Thank you very much. Yes, I'm here on behalf of Terra Property Investments LLC. The owner, Mr. Sayani, and the architect, Mike Thomas, are here also in the back, available also to answer questions and have their yellow cards also to give to Madam Secretary if needed. We appreciate the work with the staff and the county commissioner. I believe we have gone through about eight iterations of this. We finally have a project that we believe meets all of the requested facets. We have eliminated a multitude of uses at Commissioner Davis's request, which is fine. This is a multi-use commercial development. It contains detached commercial and retail space. It anticipates restaurants of fine quality. Also anticipates a larger retailer of great, of great quality at one portion of it. I believe the Madam Secretary has the handouts if you wanted to give them over. Oh, you have them. Okay, sorry. And I think you can see obviously from the development plan as well as the site plan, kind of the way, the way this lays out that you can see up there. But what we tell you is that, for example, originally, we did have some trucks and truck repair, and we eliminated that entirely at Commissioner Davis's request. There were several uses that we eliminated at, at Commissioner Davis's request, and we're happy to do it. We have a minor variance request, which comes up Thursday, which the commissioner is well aware of, which is just that it has the regular gas pumps going to the front of that C store, which is the only difference. We do not, we are not asking for a service station. All this is, is a CUP for a C store with gasoline and fuel sales. It has, as you can see, a multitude of EV charging stations. The great mass of this is commercial retail restaurant with a potential big box, which we hope there's a particular one that we can get, but we know better than to suggest a particular one. We are good with all the conditions. We've agreed to all the prohibitions. The couple of conditional use permits that have been requested, we glad to go along with that as well. Obviously, we submitted, like any law firm would, a constitutional notice of our reservation of rights and reserve our due process, equal protection, and substantive property rights under the US and Georgia constitutions. However, we believe we have met all the requested aspects of this development that the district commissioner has requested and that staff has requested, which is why we believe we've gained a recommendation of approval from both staff and from the board. We do believe this is a great project. It was heavily, heavily vetted by the commissioner with a lot of changes. And I believe this is what was being looked for. We were extraordinarily, I think our, our architect and our, our ownership was extremely flexible, and I think met every single requested change in the site plan over many, many months to hopefully give you the plan that the county will enjoy and appreciate. Thank you very much.
Mr. Heck, I failed to ask you if you want to save any minutes for rebuttal.
Mr. Chairman, I'll save two minutes if I have it.
Okay, well, we're down to three minutes, so if, this is a public hearing, so if anybody would like to speak in favor of the applicant's request, please come forward. This is in favor of applicant's request. All right, is anybody in opposition, too?
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Emmett McCord. I just had a couple of questions, and I'll be happy to recommend a favorable recommendation based on the response.
But direct your questions towards us, and then we'll have your answer. Towards us, sir.
Number one is, you said there's some examples, or there's some restaurants.
Dr. McCord?
Yes, sir.
You need to direct your questions to us.
Oh, to you all, right.
And then we'll give him opportunity to come on.
Fantastic, okay. So what were the recommended restaurants, and give us an example if you can.
That's the first question, your second question?
That's the first question.
Yes, and your second question?
You want a second question? Okay, what's the difference between a day spa and a massage parlor? Third question, EV chargers, will the, the chargers charge Teslas and all EV vehicles? Or what's the explanation for that? Should I stand here and wait on the example?
Matter of fact, you just have a seat, and let's see if we got anybody else who would like to speak in opposition, too. Please come forward.
Good evening. I also had some concerns about the EV charging stations because I was really surprised to hear that there is over 14.
Name your name, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alexis Alexander. But with the EV charging stations, there was mentioned that they're supposed to be at least 14. And there were some concerns regarding the amount of charge, the electric charge that's in that particular area because the residents that are living in between McDonough Road and South Main Street are already being impacted by the new emergency system, the emergency management system signaling. And they're also being affected by the cellular tower that's over there on the backside. So now you have the charging station that has all of these high-powered batteries that are actually working for the cars, and it just seems like a lot of signaling interferences that might be going on that could be harmful to people's health in that area.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in opposition, too? Mr. Heck, you have the floor.
I have the president also of Terra as well here. Couple of things, and I, and I appreciate the questions of Dr. McCord as well as the citizen that came up as well. First of all, on the restaurants, these are not fast food restaurants. There are no drive-throughs. There, we're hoping for high-quality sit-down dining establishments. Really not allowed to say a particular name because that will, might impede the market and might also suggest that a particular group will be coming or won't be coming. The second thing to note is, you know, by the time this comes out of the ground is probably a couple of years from now because of the development time and getting through all the development process. With regard to a massage parlor, day spa, no one wants a massage parlor. This is going to be a high-quality development. It would actually impede the customers that we want and the clientele that we want. And, and even to get, I believe, is day spa, I believe you actually would have to come back in front of this commission for a conditional use permit, so this commission is not going to allow us to have anything that is not of high quality. As for the EV charging stations, again, this was the number of charging stations that actually staff recommended. We, and, and we were fine with it. We actually had a lower number at first, and we were asked to increase the numbers. But our understanding is that since this is two years away, that there'll be ample supply, is our understanding, but the county would know a lot more about that than we did. But the county actually asked us to increase the number of EV charging stations based on, I presume, the conversion of vehicles to EV or, or hybrid. Otherwise, I believe that this was the exact type of development that was requested, and we actually lowered down what would otherwise be more higher-traffic development and complied with each and every development desire. Again, if there's any other questions, I have the ownership representative and the architect here, but other than that, I hopefully have successfully responded into what would be a quality development.
Well, Mr. Heck, the lady, the young lady that came up was asking about the effect of the charging stations and some other things that are going on as far as health is concerned. I don't know if you heard that question or not.
Well, my understanding of the electrical vehicles versus the internal combustion engine vehicles, the effect on health would be actually much better than what would be for what our regular vehicles are, which you'd much rather have the electrical vehicles coming into this than the, you know, basically what's going to be a warming carbon footprint vehicle, which we all have now. And that's why the industry is, is going somewhat, I would say, not as strong as it used to be, but pretty strong to electric vehicles because it doesn't have the emissions that the internal combustion engine does. So in terms of health, I think you'll find a magnitude of studies that'll show you the EV charged vehicles will have a much better protective effect on individual health than what a, what internal combustion engine would.
Do you know of any studies that have been done?
U.S. E.P.D., Tesla has certainly done a magnitude of studies on them. You can find them also. General Motors has done a magnitude of studies of them. There have been United Nations studies on climate change with regard to electric vehicles and with regard to the internal combustion engine. There is a study by Emery Lovins, who has done a magnitude...
I was thinking of, if 16 are there, you know, I'm just wondering about.
Basically, the cell phone towers are the ones that he meant. A lot of the, the dangerous rates that...
A lot of the dangerous rates that I think she was speaking about. That's why they're not located right around hospitals and right around schools. As far as EV charging stations, those chargers and their source of power is pretty much underground, so it's insulated to where it's just coming through the holes of that. So those are totally two separate type of, of devices that are used there.
Right, but we're, if the commission wants less EV charging stations, I'm certain we'd be amenable to it, so.
Any other questions? All right, Commissioner Davis.
I think she had, does she have time?
No.
I think she's shaking her head.
No. No, her time, time is over.
We'll talk. We have the conditions. I want to thank you all for moving as slowly as we kind of did from the beginning to the end. I also like the fact that you have encompassed that entire nineteen, nineteen acres roughly, with sidewalks as well. So our landscaping is going to be upgraded around there as well, so I want to thank you all for that, as well as the fencing that is going, the, what do we call it? The surrounding landscape with the fencing and everything, so I thank you for that. So I move that we approve BOC 2302 dash 0284 with the said.
Seven.
Seven conditions? Seven conditions. Seven conditions, that's correct.
I'll second the motion, are there any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous.
Our next item is item number twenty-two.
Chairman and Commissioners, item twenty-two, which is BOC 2402-0396, is a future land use map amendment. Just want to give you all note that that is also associated with item number twenty-three, which is a rezoning request. The applicant who is representing this case did formally submit a request to table these items. They are also the applicants to the following two projects, which are items twenty-four and twenty-five. So in short, items twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, the applicant has requested to table those items to the next available Board of Commissioners hearing in July.
All right, so I am going to make a motion to table for the last time items.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Zero-three-ninety-six, zero-three-ninety-five, zero-three-ninety-eight, and zero-three-ninety-seven for thirty days until July sixteenth of 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous.
Our next item is item number twenty-six.
Moving forward, item number twenty-six, that's BOC 2405-0420. This is a rezoning petition for sixty-thirty and sixty-one-twenty Highway eighty-five for, address is four forty-four, four fifty-four, four sixty, four sixty-seven, four seventy-four, five fifty-seven Myers Road, and sixty-sixty-five, sixty-seventy-five, and sixty-eighty-five Pine Grove Road in Riverdale, Georgia. The properties currently are zoned general business, and the request is rezoned from GB to MXI, which is mixed-use commercial industrial. So all in summary, there's about fifteen parcels of land. This is a county-initiated item which the request is to rezone and affix the character area for those existing parcels that are zoned. As you can see, there are a mixture of some commercial and industrial land uses, and this request would move the land use to a more appropriate and remedied by zoning. So the general business zoning district has some limitations in comparison with what's going on out there. So the MXI, mixed-use commercial industrial, would be the more appropriate zoning district for this area. And the reason why we're targeting this particular area is because of what's all around it, what's the current uses, and the business owners and operations that are currently going on in this particular area. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding this petition. Staff's recommendation for this is approval for the record.
All right, so this is a board-initiated request. At this time, we'll have a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this board's request? Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, thank you for your service. My name is Casey Frew, I work alongside Stephen Jones, and we represent Midhour Investments and Accession Districtsions. I plan to introduce Mr. Owen Midhour and Ms. Juanita Mary to relay the positive impact this would have on the community, over all the students and tenants in this area.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in favor of?
Good evening, my name is Owen Midhour. I'm owner of Midhour Investments. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Hambrick's office, Erica Rocker, her office with Economic Development and Planning and Zoning staff for all their efforts in getting us here. We acquired the top parcel, the Business Park at sixty-thirty Highway eighty-five, formerly known as McElroy's Plaza. We've rebranded as Airport Commerce Center. Along the way, we've invested over a million and a half dollars cleaning it up. To be frank, it was pretty junky when we acquired it, suffered from severe neglect, disrepair, there were, Sheriff's Office can attest, there was a lot of crime taking place, and we've proven out the case that the north end of the county is a great place to do business from. In addition to attracting the SP Plus, the Hartsfield-Jackson busing provider, as a tenant, we've attracted another national corporation, Relidine. But our bread and butter are mom-and-pop businesses. They occupy two, three thousand square feet of space. Some of them are more retail in nature, and then some of them are more distribution in nature. Mom works in the front, answers the phone, handles payments processing, and dad makes something, fixes something, sells something out of the back, and they make a middle-class living without working for somebody else. And it's a huge job creator, not just for the county, but for the MSA, and we're very proud of that. What we've arrived at is a park that's clean, presentable, it's certainly not fancy, but it's professional in nature, and we're attracting additional tenants, businesses, and jobs to the locale. Excuse me, lost my train of thought. Y'all need to get rid of these windows, by the way. Y'all need to be able to shake hands when you accomplish everything in here. We, unbeknownst to us, when we acquired the project, we found out that we had an issue in that having this mixture of businesses was actually not adherent to the current zoning, yet we had a number of folks that had been tenants on the property dating back twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, and these are good people, hard-working people, and we want to be able to keep them. Our project does not work without them, and we, in essence, we've approached with hat in hand of how can we arrive a solution that works not only for these small businesses that are currently there, but helps us continue to attract other, other growth industries to the, to the park? And I think what we have in front of y'all is a solution to this. So again, thank you for your service, and please let me, let me know if we have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name's Juanita Mary, I'm the CEO of Accession Districtsions Center located in Riverdale, Georgia. We also have our field training site, which is on the my office on Highway eighty-five, right behind where Owen's business is. First, I'd like to thank you all for allowing us to address you. A little history about Accession. As you may know, Chairman, we've been rooted in the county for thirteen years. Training in the field of logistics, which encompasses our warehouse forklift certification, shipping-receiving inventory management, welding, asphalt paving, CDL, and our construction-heavy equipment operations, which is located at our field site. We partner with the Clayton County Schools with all of our training. We have also built relationships with Fortune 500 hiring companies like CW Matthews, Vulcan, thank you, ma'am, Luckstone Stevens, which employ our students. From year-to-date, we have trained over three thousand individuals in Clayton County and surrounding counties. The proposed rezoning, along with the MXI tax amendment, which comes before you, will allow Accession to operate in our field training facility on Myers Road just north of the city of Riverdale. Did you know that the closest heavy equipment training school is thirty miles away? And need I mention, there's no transportation there? That's located in Conyers, Georgia. But now, we're the closest here in Riverdale, training in the field of construction-heavy equipment. Charles Drew High School, we just partnered, there's a new, I want to say a new project that the superintendent put together along with Dr. Young and Dr. Pitts. Charles Drew High School has a heavy equipment assimilation. When those students leave out of the simulation class, they come on the backside of Charles Drew High and get on real equipment, training every day, and after they've trained and certified, we assist them and place them, we have a really good placement record, in the field of construction-heavy equipment. And lastly, I'd like you to please approve the rezoning so Accession's students may continue to have the opportunity to gain valuable career skills, and thank you for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition too? Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Okay, we appreciate the comments. At this time, I would like to make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, did you want to approve?
What district is it in?
Oh, okay. I withdraw, I withdraw my approval, so is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hambrick.
I would like to approve BOC 2405-dash-0420.
All right, can, it's okay for me to approve? Second, I'll second, I'll second.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, issue unanimous.
Our next item is item twenty-seven.
Okay, item number twenty-seven, for the record, is BOC 2405-0419. I'm gonna give them a second to transition, okay.
Okay, please proceed.
Okay. Again, that's BOC 2405-0419. This is a conditional use permit request, by the request of the Board of Commissioners to approve the CUP for boarding homes, group homes, personal care homes, group homes or shared housing with or without structured programs, drug rehab, or owner offices, and sleeping quarters. Behavioral health programs by Clayton County Center Community Service Board at the property known as Fifty-Nine Thirty Highway eighty-five in Riverdale. In association, there are about twenty-four parcels in question with this petition. The property is located near the intersection of Highway eighty-five and Garden Walk Boulevard, and it is currently zoned RM. So within that residential zoning district, these uses are associated with conditional use requests. The CUP would grant permission for the proposed uses to be utilized at this location. Be happy to answer any questions. The zoning advisory board and staff both recommended approval of this petition.
Okay, again, this is a public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak in favor of this board's request, reference to this matter, please come forward. Anybody like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition too? Commissioner Hambrick.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm scared to say anything else. Go ahead, ma'am.
Well, I just want to make sure that this is the housing that's right there at eighty-five and Garden Walk across from, right. Are those like apartments, or what kind of housing is that?
Currently, right now, they appear as more of a townhome, such that they're like attached housing, based upon the representation that's shown on the screen here.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's, that's the exact location and area, so I won't get, you know, any negative feedback from my constituents on this, because that's what we would want to do if we're gonna have the group homes, have them all housed together, and they've been there for years, so. With that being said, I would like to approve BOC 2405-dash-0419.
Is there a second?
Second, I do have a question.
Go ahead, go ahead with it.
I'm concerned with the wording, shared housing with or without structured programs and drug rehabilitation. My thought is, is that with, with the secret advent of pad splitting, I want to make sure that this is something that cannot take place.
And Commissioner, can you just repeat that for me? Just, do we clear?
Pad splitting, that's the issue I'm concerned with here. We've had several properties, and I've gotten folks that have called about pad splitting, folks taking homes in three-bedroom houses and putting walls up around the dining room and everything else, and having eight folks in there where the cars are all over the place. With that, the wording of shared housing with or without structured programs and drug rehab, I just want to make sure that pad splitting cannot be utilized within this.
Well, if they are.
But they're already.
Exactly, these are apartments, little townhomes.
Apartments are different, it's pad splitting.
Well, the pad splitting that I've had in District Two has been houses.
Right.
These are more like apartments, they already split.
Hey, Commissioner, I'm Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. This has been a longstanding housing for so many years. It has evolved from one form of housing to another. There is some amount of pad splitting, the way they actually designed, this is over fifteen, twenty years they've been there. So you're, I get your question, but it would not lead to any pad splitting because they already exist.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, issue unanimous. Next.
Okay, the last petition for this evening for zoning is item number twenty-eight, that is BOC 2312-0380. That's a conditional use request for tractor and truck parking and trailer storage at sixty-two sixty Garden Walk Boulevard in Riverdale, Georgia. This is in Commissioner District Two's district. On June the fourteenth, we received a formal notice from the applicant to formal request of withdrawal for this petition, so that's all that staff has to recommend at this moment. ZAD did recommend denial, but the notice still stands firm that you are, are making a vote to accept the withdrawal or other actions.
Is that a withdrawal forever?
At this moment, we don't have any notice. If they wish to withdraw, it's six months versus a year, that they will be able to come back, so at this moment, we don't have any notice that they were wishing to come back at this time.
So they gave you a written notice of request, of request.
To withdraw, that's correct. And that was June the fourteenth, we received that.
I would like to accept the withdrawal.
Is that your motion?
Yes, to accept the withdrawal for BOC 2312-dash-0380.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, issue unanimous. It's unanimous.
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given two minutes, maximum time limit, to speak before the board with a total time of twenty minutes. Comments must be limited to matters over the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members shouting and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency. For the record, speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
To the chair and to the board, my name is Arnold Ruffin. I was here at the last meeting. I had a question, and my question was Clayton County is not accepting the HUD-VAS program for veterans to subsidize the rent. I had the question last meeting, and I guess after I have a question, I'd like an answer concerning the HUD-VAS program not being accepted in Clayton County while it is accepted in the other counties.
Yeah, so I can say that I did reach out to Mr., is it Mandela Jones? As well as our HUD person, and I have not gotten a full answer for you, I can tell you that. And if I, when I talk to you, and please get my number. I want to have the thorough and complete answer on that. So long story short, right now, I cannot give you that answer right now, but when I give it to you, I want to make sure it's complete and thorough when I do talk to you. So if you want to give me a call tomorrow, we can talk further. Not tomorrow, tomorrow is a holiday, Thursday, we'll talk further on it, but thank you.
Thank you.
For keeping that on the forefront.
And I appreciate it.
Because I was very blown away that we didn't accept that, so thank you.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Mike Maloney, Turner Road, District Three. I'm wondering, why is this rezoning table? I mean, is there an explanation for it other?
The applicant asked for it to be table.
Oh, okay.
And I think they didn't like the direction of our conversation.
Okay.
If you stick around after the meeting, I'll have a conversation.
All right, thank you, Chair.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. To start my comment this evening, I want to say thank you to all the candidates who had the courage, the courage, to throw their hats and themselves as nominees into the various races throughout our great county. For all of you gave me a choice in our great democracy. I also want to thank all the people who helped each candidate. Please let me give special thanks to all the people who worked the various poles, and especially the pole at the Christian Life Center at the corner of Lake Harbin Road and Forty-two Highway, which is my precinct. Thank you for all those above mentioned.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment. Is there a need for executive session?
Yes, on personnel only.
All right, is the motion going to executive session for personnel?
So moved.
Now, second to motion, are there any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It is unanimous. Everybody have a Brady? All right, motion to reconvene.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye. Oppose. It is unanimous. Now, as a result of the interviews that we just conducted, is there a motion to appoint a new Parks and Recreation Director?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we appoint Nicole Horn as the Director of Parks and Recreation with a starting salary of one thirty-four seven seven five twenty-nine.
Did you have a start date?
Oh, start date is Saturday, June twenty-second.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Ms. Horn, is there anything you would like to share? At the podium, please.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, and C-Suite, and my other colleagues. I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to serve as the Parks and Recreation Director. I look forward to working with Mr. Stubbs and Mr. Grant and moving the department in a good direction, so thank you. I look forward to Saturday.
All right, well, congratulations again. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Now, second, those in favor, aye. Oppose. It's unanimous.